Thank you for all for attending this very special meeting. In accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21 and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special session of the Virginia Beach City Council to hold a public briefing on the independent investigation final report Wednesday, November 13th, 2019, 6:00 PM, City Council chambers, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. We are now in session. And with your permission, I'd like to thank you all for joining this evening. Well, not even six months have passed since the horrific May 31st tragedy. We have all arrived here at another major milestone along our road to recovery. To the families, friends, neighbors, and coworkers of our victims who are here today with us and watching from a distance, I extend you a very special welcome. We scheduled this meeting so that we could receive the results of the independent review. We know we will never be the same, but we know we must move forward, and this is the critical part of our healing journey. Just two months following the shooting, the council directed the city auditor to engage an independent consultant to conduct an independent review. The scope of the review is much broader than the criminal investigation. To be clear, we undertook this independent review as a complement to the criminal investigation so we could sort through the compelling and often conflicting narratives, theories, speculations, allegations, and in situations to uncover the facts and learn the truth. This city council and this city organization maintains a deep commitment to learning everything we can about the perpetrator and the circumstances surrounding his tenure here. We also sought an independent review of relevant city policies, procedures, and practices, especially those related to facility security, prevention of workplace violence, and employee alerting and response to active shooter notifications. Ultimately, we are seeking recommendations regarding best practices we can consider going forward. From this work, I am confident we will emerge as a stronger, safer organization. It is also my personal hope that we will serve as a platform to help us work through our differences with civility and respect. I do want to remind everybody that VB Strong Center is open. The sole mission of this facility in partnership with Centerra Healthcare is to provide care and support to anyone impacted by our greatest tragedy. Please visit the VB Strong Center org for information about services and hours. I am going to ask city auditor Lyndon Ramirez to introduce Hillard Heinz and talk about the logistics of tonight's briefing. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. On July 2nd, only 134 days ago, city council unanimously passed a resolution calling for an independent review of the May 31, 2019 tragedy. Tonight marks the official conclusion of that review with Hillard Heinz's presentation of their findings and recommendations. Thank you for having the confidence in me and my office to oversee this review. To reiterate to the public here today and those watching from other locations, the three main objectives of the review were to, one, create a timeline; number two, review the perpetrator's employment history and workplace interactions; and three, review the relevant city policies, procedures, and practices that the mayor just mentioned. In addition, we did add to the scope and asked Hillard Heinz to do an independent survey, employee climate survey. The results of that independent climate survey are included in the final report in detail that you will receive at the conclusion of the presentation. So those results are in there. Just to be clear, while we oversaw the process, to maintain our independence, we did not participate in conducting the review, nor did we have any input or influence in the findings or recommendations. As a matter of fact, we did not receive a copy of the final report until a few hours ago. I want to personally thank all of the city management and staff, many who are here today or watching, for their cooperation during this review. Many of those were in Building 2 on May 31st, and many who are still recovering physically and emotionally. I don't think the investigation could have been completed in such a short timeframe without their assistance and cooperation, especially under the trying circumstances. In addition, I would like to thank the firm of Hillard Heinz for their professionalism, their thoroughness in conducting the investigation. Before I turn it over to Hillard Heinz, I do want to go over just a few housekeeping notes for the evening. Copies of the full report, including the executive summary and the PowerPoint presentation, will be made available immediately for download from my office website, and that is www.vbgov.com/cityauditor. So vbgov.com/cityauditor immediately after the session ends. The report will also be posted to the Hillard Heinz website, which is www.hillardheinz.com. We will have hard copies for all of council, and we will also make available hard copies to city management, especially those departments that have been impacted, so they can work with our acting city manager to provide a management response to the findings and recommendations. When the meeting adjourns, we will take a very brief five-minute break to allow us to reset for a short media Q and A with Hillard Heinz that will take place right here. Okay, so we asked the media that is here, we're basically going to have Mr. Heinz turn around, and there's going to be a media Q and A right here, so you do not need to leave. To maintain a sense of order, I will moderate the Q and A, and we'll call on members of the press. After the Q and A, Hillard Heinz will then be available to do interviews. To those family members present, many who have decided to stay at the private location, if you wish to be able to ask the representative from Hillard Heinz, you can do so at the same time at the private location where the 5:00 PM briefing took place. And it looked like many of the family members have chosen to stay there, okay? There are two Hillard Heinz team members there right now with the family, okay? As the mayor stated, our city will never be the same, but we know we must move forward, and this review is a critical part of our healing journey. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Arnett Heinz, the CEO of Hillard Heinz, for the presentation of their results. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyndon. Good evening. Welcome, sir. To the families and colleagues of the people who lost their lives on May 31st, as well as the Virginia Beach community, the mayor, and the city council, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to present our findings of the review. During our review of the terrible acts that shattered many lives on May 31st, we learned a great deal about your family members, friends, and coworkers who are no longer with us, and about the four employees and one police officer who survived the attack and are fighting their way back towards health. We learned about the many acts of heroism and selfishness by the brave employees of Building 2, police officers and other first responders who placed their own security aside to protect and shelter others. And we learned about many employees who escaped physical harm but continued to struggle with the aftereffects of the shooting. With compassion for your community and respect for your resilience, Hillard Heinz has completed its independent review of the tragic events. Our team has worked very carefully to identify and review all the information available to us about what happened that awful day and why it happened. As you will discover in our report, the attacker did not display warning signs for what we call prohibited behaviors associated with individuals who are on a pathway to violence that could have been provided to the City of Virginia Beach or an expert threat assessor with an opportunity to intervene ahead of this act of violence. On your behalf, we have been driven by the desire to identify insights and analysis that can help the City of Virginia Beach intervene and prevent acts of targeted violence in the future. When you engaged us 119 days ago, we acknowledged the urgency driving your assignment and immediately mobilized our team and structured our approach to conform to the city's priorities, requirements, and expectations as memorialized in the city council resolution to engage the independent consultant. Furthermore, we recognized your resolve to ensuring transparency and public trust in the results of the review. Throughout this review, our team remained vigilant to safeguard our independence and public confidence in the critical work we were doing for the city. The 262-page report I am delivering to you today is the exclusive and sole work product of our team. There was no influence or attempt to influence this report from any city employee, any representative of the city, or any other stakeholders. At the conclusion of our briefing this evening, each of you will receive our full report along with an executive summary as well. This report consists of six key findings and 58 recommendations, supported by insight and observations we believe are most important. Before I summarize the six key findings, I would like to acknowledge that our work remained consistent and aligned to the resolution that you passed regarding this review. You asked us to achieve four things in summary. You asked us to help you understand, to determine and confirm what happened and why on May 31st, including the creation of a timeline leading up to the shooting that highlights the perpetrator's employment history and workplace interactions. This timeline is complete. It is on pages 29 through 35 of our report that you will receive in a minute, and we start the timeline from April 1996 to June 9th of 2019. You asked us to help you improve. You wanted us to review relevant city policies, procedures, and practices, including without limitation, those related to facility security, prevention of workplace violence, and employee alerting and response to active shooter notifications. You also wanted to learn. You wanted to identify actions that might help prevent the tragedy or mitigate its consequences. And finally, you asked us to help you prepare and prevent, to recommend strategies, tactics, countermeasures that the city can improve upon and to implement to help ensure that such acts or similar ones do not occur again. What we did, in the process of this 119 days, we maintained a continuous presence here in the city from July 22nd until November 4th. Our work involved 230 interviews. We conducted two surveys of the workforce, one for the entire workforce and one for Building 2 employees. We conducted four listening sessions, two for employees, two for the communities. We met with 10 of the 12 families for extensive interview, one other family we did meet with briefly, and then one chose not to request their privacy. Our timeline was completed, our Building 2, the assessment, the physical assessment of that, data analysis that we previously discussed, and a retrospective look at the attacker and his behavior. The team that we brought forth here included 18 subject matter experts. We had HR professionals, we had forensic and clinical psychologists, attorneys, law enforcement experts, threat and violence risk management experts, as well as security experts. When we completed our exhaustive review and analysis, our team identified six key findings. The first key finding relates to the heroic actions that were presented that day, not just by the first responders and law enforcement officers, but many of your employees that were in Building 2 that day. We believe that the actions of many of these employees actually helped save countless lives. There are two stories that I have to share with you in regards to these actions. One employee was on the second floor. He was in his office. Shooting had started, and he got 911 on the phone, and he's whispering, he's trying to give his location, he's trying to give the location of the shooter. 911 is frantically taking hundreds of calls that day, but they're listening to him, they're taking their time trying to understand exactly where he's at in the building, and the operator hears eight shots right in the phone. After that, the phone goes silent. That employee was trying to direct first responders, trying to save not only his life, the life of his colleagues, and that employee was severely wounded, but he is alive. The second story relates to an employee who was on the second floor and heard shots that were coming from outside. As she looked outside, she immediately started gathering her coworkers and directing others to hide, to find a place of security. We know for a fact that those actions by that employee saved countless lives that day. She was able to muster employees and gather them in a secure room until law enforcement and your police department was able to respond and engage the shooter. Those are just summaries. In our report, you'll find many other factors that relate to the heroic actions that we identify. Finding two, the attacker. The attacker did not display warning signs or prohibited behaviors associated with a pathway to violence that could have provided the City of Virginia Beach or expert threat assessors with an opportunity to intervene ahead of the violence on May 31st. One of the things I can share with you, there's a couple of things I'd like to share with you in this regard. Our report covers that in detail. But from 2016 to 2019, this subject started experiencing various factors in his life. A divorce was happening about that time. His behavior in the workplace did start to change, his performance level started to decline. He also started acquiring firearms at this same time. He purchased six firearms, a suppressor, and body armor. When we started the review, we heard countless rumors around this subject and his physical interaction with coworkers. We heard stories that he was denied promotions and he was angry with that. We heard stories that he was under such discipline that that was a pressure. Those rumors, we were not able to substantiate and in fact refute it, those rumors that we heard. An interesting element that we found retrospectively is that in May 2018, one year before the shooting, he starts to visit sites that are stories covering other mass shootings. So a full year prior to his act of violence on May 31st, we find him going to five different sites, looking at stories on mass shootings. Again, retrospectively, there's no way to understand what was going through his mind when he was visiting sites, other than curiosity at the time. One of the things I will, the mayor made a comment about how there's multiple investigations taking place. The police department has an exhaustive investigation underway. The FBI is participating in some aspects of it. At the conclusion of all of these investigations is when you will gain the best insight over this totality of the tragedy that confronted your community. As an example of that, we know that the FBI has the computer systems of this individual. So we have no way of knowing what was on his computer in that regard, and what other details that might be gleaned from that. But I'm confident that when the FBI's work is done in consultation with your police department, I'm confident that information would be made available to give you further insight and potentially other steps that could be taken as far as how you help prevent these acts of violence. But that'll be a critical piece. Our third finding, workplace violence prevention. Improving the City of Virginia Beach's workplace violence prevention programs and policies represents a key step towards establishing a new culture of workplace safety across your city facilities. It is recommended that the city establish a comprehensive program that holistically enables and advances workplace violence prevention. We believe the city should institute mandatory workplace violence prevention training. Coincidentally, in Building 2, there were two clerks that were known among their colleagues and their work group as having volunteered to attend their own workplace violence prevention training, and they came back to work energized, sharing what they had learned in this training with their coworkers. On the day of the attack, these employees put their plan in place, and in fact, were able to take, I believe it was 12 of their coworkers, and they secured themselves in a workroom, and their plan was to take the largest file cabinet that they had in there that was very heavy and put that as a brace behind the door, and that's what kept them safe. And that was training that they received on their own initiative because they went out and got the training. Establishing a formal behavioral threat assessment capability or interdisciplinary threat assessment team would greatly advance the city's ability to identify and prevent workplace The city's human resources department, the City of Virginia Beach, we recommend that you take a look at restructuring this program because it's a highly decentralized human resources function, particularly with respect to establishing roles, reporting channels, policies, protocols, data management, and training. We believe you can strengthen the alignment of duties between unit-level HR functions and the city human resources department to improve engagement and reporting, as well as facilitate information sharing and data management critical to workplace violence prevention. Establishing a central database on all employee performance and workplace issues would increase the city's visibility into and knowledge about employee resources, skills, and issues, including those directly impacting the risk of workplace violence. The city's focus on and use of employee assistance program should be strengthened and its role, availability, and value communicated more fully to your employees. Creating a public advocates' office would create an independent channel for employees to voice their concern and over time improve employee morale and job satisfaction, while helping the city identify and resolve a range of issues and to do so more effectively. We offered some of these recommendations in light of the multiple voices that we heard during our review process. I believe it was my last update to the council that I shared with you some concerns of allegations relating to racism and a toxic work environment. These were raised in the four listening sessions that we had. In an effort to gain some insight around this, we approached the city auditor. This was completely outside the scope and the mandate of your resolution, but the concerns were loud enough that we presented those to the city auditor, and in our discussions, we recommended that another survey be conducted, but truly independent at this time, and that's what the city auditor approved. He approved a city, an independent citywide survey of all employees. This survey, the complete survey, is attached in our report as an appendix. So we received the report from the company that was engaged to provide this report, and their complete, unedited, unaudited report is as an appendix to our report. In our main report, we summarize elements out of it. And while the survey identified isolated comments supporting the concerns of racism and toxic work environment, overall, we found no evidence that this was a pattern in practice was systemic throughout the workforce. So we believe there are voices, there are people that have been impacted, those voices need to be heard, and action needs to be taken. That's why we recommend that creating a public advocates' office could be a very valuable tool to make sure employees' voices and concerns are heard, and they have another source to go to for that. Key finding number five, critical incident response. Improvements in the city's critical incident response protocols are warranted in areas such as mass notification alerting, training, and compliance, first responder communications, and all hazards response planning. The city's mass communication capabilities were not robust enough to address all communication requirements on May 31st. Your first responders, your law enforcement have a tremendous program established on responding to incidents of this tragedy. What we discovered was that there are opportunities to enhance some of the communications needs that come up in a critical incident like this. So you'll find more in the report outlining that. Finding number six, physical and technical security. Improvements to various physical and technical security capabilities will help support the city's workplace violence prevention goals and capabilities in months and years ahead. No single-city department or individual is currently responsible for overall physical and technical security. Different departments or subdivisions handle discrete portions of the Virginia Beach security program applicable to Building 2. The city should develop an enterprise-wide physical and technical security plan, including a formal written minimum standard, minimum security standard for all city-owned and operated buildings. First responders did not have access to critical areas in Building 2 when they first arrived and were pursuing the shooter. And Virginia Beach, the City of Virginia Beach, does not have a robust camera network that provides visibility across all of your municipal campuses. In our report, you'll find all of these key findings, you'll find how we addressed your mandate sequentially, and where the key findings were established and the recommendations we have for you to consider as you go forward. we have for you to consider as you go forward. As I mentioned, in our report, you'll find these 58 recommendations. And they're grouped in categories here. In regards to first responders, we have a total of eight recommendations. It relates to some of the elements that we've listed there, and a few more, but these are areas that I'm sure that your teams of first responder will probably find in an after-action report that they'll conduct, probably will complement this area with other recommendations that they may have internally. Around agency coordination, command, and control, we have 12 recommendations in there. We believe roles and responsibilities, when you have in multi-agencies respond, that needs to be sharpened. Unified command, scene processing, case management, those elements. In the area of physical and technical security, we believe there's 12 recommendations that you might consider. They go from, you know, setting the minimum standards that we talked about, to 24-hour monitoring, having these integrated security technology systems that can collaborate with one another. HR support. HR support, along with workplace violence prevention, have an equal 13 recommendation in each of the categories. But we think there's some elements of HR support that will truly enhance the city's efforts when it comes to preventing violence in the workplace. And then specifically, as it relates to violence, workplace violence prevention, we have those 13 recommendations. They cover the range of, probably the first and most critical one is your leadership commitment in support of that initiative. So, as leaders of the government, and your desire to advance this, that is a strong commitment to all employees, that you're committed, and you're going down that path. It's been an honor to do this work on your behalf. Thank you for allowing us into your community, and for helping us ask and try to answer the hard questions. The light you have helped shine on the difficult facts here will help you and your community, and others, prepare to save lives in the future. The... I'm gonna ask Lyndon and Deb to provide each of you a copy of the report that we have here. Along with that is an executive summary, that's about... The executive summary is 50 pages. The report, the total report is 262 pages. It's very detailed and comprehensive, and we look forward to having another opportunity to have a conversation with you in this regard, if you so desire.
Okay, thank you very much there. Okay, we're gonna open up the questions. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Just going back to your one recommendation, let me find it here under HR.
Yep.
Key finding number four on page 10. You had indicated, and perhaps it's probably in this document that I haven't had a chance to review.
Will be.
But the significance of the decentralization, I'm trying to wrap my head around that. How did that impact this tragedy?
What we find in this decentralized model is that it limits the ability of true professionals. You're not gonna have enough trained professionals in workplace violence prevention throughout the city to be able to identify every element. So, having a centralized approach where information funnels up to a smaller team of experts helps in that regard. And I'll ask Deb, I know Deb looked into this area a good bit, to add some other commentary in this area.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the city, it's a major corporation, right? And the ability to ensure consistency across your units, in terms of HR support, becomes important. And so, the idea of that, having a single chain of command, when we talk about centralization, the HR liaisons that work within each of the units, report to the unit, you know, leadership, the unit managers, rather than HR central. And so, we feel that in terms of consistency in policies, practices, and frankly, how you engage with all of your employees across the city, that a centralized focus in your HR practices would bring benefit, not only to the city as an employer, but also to your employees in terms of support development, and the ability to report issues.
And it also supports the frontline manager, who is oftentimes not trained and equipped and prepared for that full range of HR responsibilities. He'd have a... He or she would have a broader resource to help them in that regard.
Okay, and then a second question I had, Mr. Mayor, is you listed under Slide 5, you talk about your team of 18 subject matter experts. If you wouldn't mind putting that up there, because I don't think the public got to see that. I think you skipped past that during your... During your...
President, would you mind firing that back up?
So, anyway, my question is, you indicated that you have had psychiatrists, psychologists on the team. Were they able to draw any conclusions that you can share with us?
In our report, we take a look at, and we report on what observable behavior, because the... A clinical and forensic psychologist, when they can do a direct evaluation of a subject, they can then draw specific conclusions and opinions and a perspective. When they don't have an individual to directly interview, it's very difficult to draw decisive opinions. What we made observations on is that the behaviors that we're not seeing were interesting, because those are prohibited behaviors that we define in the report, those are clear signs somebody is potentially on a path to violence. Concerning behavior... Our reports, right there. Concerning behavior is another precursor that psychologists and forensic and clinical psychologists can often form opinions on, and there was limited, but there were some of that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rouse, and then Ms. Abbott.
So, I'm trying to understand your report and your findings. You know, we hired you for independent review and study, and as I recall, our last, your last update, I asked you, was there anything in the resolution that we presented to you all, that prevented you from looking into the workplace environment? And you said, "No." Your answer was, "No."
That's right.
And so, I'm curious as to, being that you had all these concerns about the workplace environment, that was loud enough for you to speak to Lyndon about it, why would you leave it up to our city, or city staff, to conduct a survey of that environment?
We conducted the survey. You didn't. We engaged the team to conduct the survey.
And you spoke... And Lyndon approved that?
He approved that. And that report, when you have a chance, Councilman, that full report is at the end, and it gives you great detail into that survey. So, that's an independent... We did not insert ourselves into the survey. We wanted that independence, because our responsibility was focused on your resolution that you passed. But we were concerned enough at the time that those issues were raised, that's why we brought it to the city auditor, and he approved our effort to engage a party to help to see if there was information that would impact our work. And at the end of the day, there was insight that we discovered, but it wasn't information that substantially changed or directed the work that we were doing.
Okay. And so, was there... Was there enough information to you to make these recommendations to provide, and a place for our employees or staff to be able to go to, to speak about these concerns? What was that... In the survey, what was those findings, so to speak?
So, one of the findings, some of the findings are addressed in the HR section. So, as you digest that, the... You'll find an area where we talk about this public advocacy office, or an ombudsman. That's what we believe, that's one of the strengths of the survey, that we felt that if employees had another resource outside of their manager, outside of HR, this would be a good resource for all employees to reach out to independently. That's why we've recommended that.
All right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Abbott?
I actually wanted to ask about the public advocacy office, OMSBUD... I'm not gonna try to say that word. Can you help me understand what that looks like? Is there a municipality that you can think of off the top of your head that does something similar? I guess, how do we go about crafting that? What is the... I mean, I don't know if this is in the report, like, best practices for an organization like that.
I'll let Deb step up in here, because she led our team's effort on that. But there is many organizations that have that. The federal government, frankly, is a leader in having ombudsman program, and so, and there's plenty of information available on that, and as well as professional associations and organizations. Deb?
And there's multiple models on it, so we don't define a model for the city, but the goal here, in the same way that we approached our review overall, was identifying pathways for employees to have voice. And an OMSBUD program can be as formal as, you know, having full investigatory powers, as to one where it's basically focused on mediation and engagement with the manager, right? And so, what are those realms of engagement, and how you want to do it? There's several, like, as Arnett identified, the federal government has a range of OMSBUDmen, and they operate to different levels throughout the government. We've seen some mid-sized cities, some colleges, and the programs that we looked at, really more or less had three different types of approach. I mean, there's a full-on inspector general to basically an employee mediation center. And so, that range of behaviors, or a range of engagement, varies depending upon what the needs of the city are as they identify. And I think that that's something that comes to follow on, as part of the recommendations in the report.
I got you, okay. Thank you, it helps me get a better idea of what you're discussing. Thanks.
Okay, Rosemary?
I want to thank you for the report and the seriousness that you've attached to this. Darkest day in our history, and you've really addressed it in a very special way. And I was really hoping that we would have multiple outcomes from your report, which you've given us, of what we can do to protect our employees, and have a better workplace, and better procedures, and you've done really a great job with that. And it'll be interesting to dig into this, and then for our management to come up with a plan to implement your recommendations. I did want to ask you about the families. You said that you interviewed 10 to 11 of the families, of the 12 families, but what about the injured families?
We interviewed...
Because you didn't mention them.
We interviewed the individuals that were injured.
Yes, we made contact with all the families of those who were injured. They're not as prioritized within the report out of respect for their privacy, but we've engaged with all the family members, and with some of the victims' directors.
I want to... Because you just mentioned the 12s, I want to make sure.
And their thoughts, their concerns, observations are captured in our report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
So, going back to a comment that Mr. Rouse made about the survey, I wanted to clarify one thing. When you say you went to Lyndon for approval, it was for financial approval, correct? And he didn't direct the survey? He was...
No, no, he did not direct it. It was something that was outside, certainly outside the scope, and it needed funding.
Right.
And, but from an independence, he had... He just said, "I'll provide you the funding, you run with it."
Right, so he was approving a change of your contract. So, the question I have, and I just, again, just two seconds of looking through here, it looks like it indicated about 3,100 or so people replied, about 42% response rate. And when I looked at the numbers, just at first glance, they seemed to be reasonably similar to our member survey. Did you do a side-by-side analysis of the city's survey versus the third-party survey?
Our vendor did. Our analysis in high level is really just stating that you really do see a consistent tracking, and so, these concerns about somehow the numbers are being manipulated, you saw a little bit of a lower trend overall. That's not to be unexpected, in terms of the time that the survey was taken, and the issue facing the city at that time. But the numbers consistently track in terms of where we are, or where you were in the March survey versus this survey, and you've recently posted your annual survey as well. And so, while there's a little bit of decrease across the numbers overall, we didn't... I mean, our survey provider didn't find it to be indicative of any terms of... They found it to be consistent with the annual survey held by the city.
So, if I could follow up on that, so 42% response rate, is that considered statistically relevant?
It is.
Surveyors?
Yeah, and our survey... Our surveyor confirmed that, is that they had a sufficiently valid sample to do the analysis. The one issue that they had challenge with was that they didn't have access to the raw data, but they were still able to analyze and develop their own findings that are contained within the report.
Hey, Mr. Bellucci, then Mr. Tower?
Thank you. You mentioned in your presentation that there were a variety of possible motivating factors that you examined during the course of your investigation, and you listed some of them, including potential denial, promotions, discipline, and you mentioned a few others, and I wonder if you could review those again. And you also mentioned that you were able to refute those rumors during the... With the evidence that you uncovered during the investigation. The... One of the principal questions that I think we all hoped might be answered during this investigation is the question of why, of course. And the rumors that you noted have been the subject of much discussion, and I think are one of the principal questions that our community has, probably as they're watching this discussion. They've also been the subject of tremendous media scrutiny, and they reflect the public statements of those who were closely related to the victims. So, I think that the discussion of these rumors is very important to our city and to this investigation. And you mentioned that you refuted them, so I wonder if you could provide some greater detail about, and maybe it's in the report, which will be publicly available, but I think for the purposes of this discussion, I wonder if you could providing, if you would mind providing any greater insight into the... Those rumors, and how exactly you refuted them, and with what level of confidence you feel that you're able to state such a claim?
The... I'm not sure, I used the word "refuted," but I could have... I probably would have been more accurate if I'd have said, "We did not substantiate." That would have been a more accurate representation of the rumors that I cited out to you, because there were... There was widespread stories that we just did not substantiate in this process. And we didn't list all of those stories in the report and separate those, because that's just the investigative process, in our efforts of trying to understand why. The subject did not leave a manifesto, at least to our knowledge, because the FBI has his personal computer. What's in that computer, at some point in time, you will be advised of that by, you know, the FBI and your local police department, when that's available. But that, as an independent reviewer, we didn't have access to that. So, we're not able to get to, you know, to determine those things. And a manifesto oftentimes is the sole, when an individual, when a shooter is deceased, is sometimes the sole document that you have back on why they did something, and we just didn't have access to that. We do share vignettes of his email communication from his work computer, that he was writing emails in regards to discipline that he was receiving, that he thought was unjust. But those emails were never sent, and... But they were maintained in his computer. And we provide examples of that, and it shows you a little bit of what he's thinking at the time, and his unjust... His unjust feeling of discipline that was imposed on him.
And if I could follow on, though, when we came on site, there were a bunch of... People were still trying to process what happened, right? And we started hearing rumors, and so, to the level that you print a rumor and say that it's not been substantiated, you almost continue the rumor, right? And so, as we looked at some high-level things, really, that's why we're founding some of the HR recommendations here. There was a lot of people talking a lot of things, and many of those believed them to be accurate and truthful, and they were not. He had never taken a promotional exam, and so, this idea that because he didn't receive a promotion, he did this. There was no substantiated proof to that. You also had an individual who was working in Building 2, who had also caused a problem, was terminated the day prior. And so, a lot of people were conflating what happened with that individual with the shooter in this instance, and we were able to knock out some of the allegations about physical violence, significant disciplinary history, those types of things. And so, when we look at that as a whole, as Arnett identified as part of the review, that's what our team looked at. But for us to be able to do line by line... But for us to be able to do line by line on the overall rumors was not effective, and we felt that it would only continue to conflict the issues. But what we can say is that any of the more significant rumors that came to our attention, we went through, we were not able to substantiate that. And what we did in terms of our retrospective analysis is the factual information that we had. And that came out of what we were able to review, the evidence, and frankly, our interviews with people. So that's where we stand in terms of the background.
Could I just ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
So would you say that, without listing them independently, would you say, my understanding was refuted, so I'm glad we were able to clear that up, but would you say that none of the rumors were substantiated in any way?
I would say that based on what we are able to determine here, that none of the rumors that were identifying a cause for why this happened were able to be substantiated. And so, what we know from a retrospective review are some of the actions that we talked about. But this idea that where people were saying, "He did it because of this," none of those have been substantiated.
And what you will find in the report are statements of fact or statements that we were able to substantiate. And those are reported in the segment that we talk about the attacker.
Yeah, I think when you say why, everybody wants a nice, clean reason, and in this case, that didn't come forward. There, you know, when we interviewed people individually, a lot of his coworkers said that they would never have expected this individual to do this. So those clear answers don't exist here.
Mr. Tower?
Thank you, and thank you for your work and your report. I have a few questions. The first one is, you interviewed 230 people, I think. Can you give us a little more light on how you chose who to interview, which, how those decisions were made in general?
It was a mixed methodology, right? Initially, we focused on employees in building two as well as city leaders and people who had information relative to the incident. And so, we interviewed the responders that day. We interviewed the key department heads in terms of critical incident response. And then, we started working through the leadership of building two as well as the city leadership. We also established an email address and a toll-free number where we published and encouraged people to reach out to us. And so, there was a little bit of a snowball effect where we had people then reaching out to us because they felt that they had information. And when we talk about 230-plus, a lot of those were multiple contacts. And so, we talked to people who then talked to people, they'd come with somebody else to the interview. And so, our goal overall was to identify the key people who held policies across the city relative to our remit under this council's direction, as well as those employees who survived the incident in building two. And then, we grew from there in terms of who we're able to touch and who we're able to talk to.
If I could ask...
Sure.
On, with regard to your reference to interviewing city leaders, can you tell me which people you interviewed who you deemed to be city leaders?
I can tell you that we talked to department heads at HR, Public Utilities, we talked to the former city manager, we talked to the city auditor, and we talked to your department heads in terms of the first responder units. We purposely avoided talking to political leaders because we understood that this process did not want to be politicized. And so, we really looked at what were the requirements of the resolution, and we followed that in terms of what we had to find.
How about deputy city managers?
To my knowledge, we may have spoke to one. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'm not 100% sure this time.
On page 185 of the report, we summarized the positions that we interviewed. I don't see deputy city manager, I see city manager.
The city manager being the former city manager?
Correct.
Okay. But no deputy city manager?
I don't believe so.
All right. If I'm...
Sure. Go ahead.
And you'll excuse me, I have very little expertise, in fact, virtually none, in either security or law enforcement, but a couple of ones I just would like a little more. When you refer to critical incident response protocols, could you give me a little more information about what you're referring to there? I'm sure it may, again, it may be in the report, but it...
Right. Right. So the reason that this is prioritized and highlighted in the report is that since 9/11, there's been a heavy investment across America in terms of equipping our first responders to respond to mass casualty incidents. And that has evolved over time, right? Post 9/11 and to where we are today. So this city has invested in a lot of training and it's a credit to those first responders in terms of what they were able to accomplish that day. But it really goes to the overall structure and response of an incident. If you take this specific incident, you have the shooting happening inside building two. You have the officers who went in and did what they needed to do to stop that shooting there. But then, you also have a host of other responders. You have medical response, fire response, emergency communications. And that's one big, you know, function in terms of a single event. And so, those protocols establish, are intended to establish, the way that these entities, who normally work independently, can work collaboratively to come to an outcome. Because what we've learned over time, starting since 9/11 and reports such as these, is that these incidents have a tendency to follow a similar path, that there's similar pressure points in these incidents. And what are the best ways to deal with those issues that we know are coming? And so, when we talk about protocols, that's what first responders train to, and that's what helps them keep people safe and helps them to respond to a very chaotic, fast-moving event.
Is the issue, perhaps it's both, but I'm trying, is the issue that protocols that were there were not followed, or is it the protocols were inadequate in some way?
There's a duality to it, and I really want to make clear is that your first responders here really did heroic actions that day.
I have no doubt of that.
But when we look at the protocols in existence, for example, there's a function called Emergency Operations Center. And that's for key leads within each of these primary organizations to respond to a central location where there is a shared picture of what's happening, and they can start to identify and direct support resources. So that the individuals who are in the building going after an active shooter aren't worried about getting an ambulance there or being able to set up for the subsequent investigation. So that's one issue that we identified. Then, in terms of the protocols themselves, the city has individual protocols, and our recommendation in part is to ensure that they're better aligned and that we task a single agency with not only ensuring, how do you say, alignment to, you know, a consistent protocol, but also being able to test those protocols, make recommendations on where there's weak points, and then having the authority to follow through to make sure that those corrections are made. And so, those are the two issues that we saw.
Okay. Thank you. I have one more if you...
Sure. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Again, just to put a little more meat on the bone, so to speak, on minimum security and technology standards, that's a general phrase. Can you give us anything that gives a more sense of what those sort of are for a typical building or a typical...
Great question. The setting minimum standards would involve setting your standards around CCTV, the types of, there are multiple types of CCTV. So what's your minimum standard for that type of device? What's your layout? Do you cover all doors? Do you cover interior workspaces? So you're setting standards that are your minimum standards, and then you may have other locations that want to enhance those standards. But access control, the key locking systems, all of that, putting standards around your physical and technical security requirements.
So in the report, there are no suggestions as to what those standards should be, more what you have to do those options?
That's a recommendations we recommend you undertake.
Take with a security...
Because you have, I think I mentioned 200 facilities. We can't do that. You know, we can do it, but it's a separate undertaking that would take a long time. But we did look at building two, and we looked at this building because it's comparable in structure and size. And that's where we gathered our information from.
Thank you. Those are very helpful answers. Mr. Mayor, one thing I would just like to say is I hope there'd be an opportunity after we've had time to read and absorb this report in full, that we could have another session where we could ask questions that might come up after.
Yeah, that would definitely be, you know, well in order.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moss, and then Ms. Wood.
Well, thank you for your report. I'd like to follow up on Mr. Belucci's line of questioning because one of the spouses of a victim has certainly communicated that he felt that there were, based on conversations with his spouse, emails that should have been achievable and obtainable but were missing. So did any of your expertise contain a forensic IT person who knows if emails have been deleted? You went back and looked at former backup files? Are you able to determine whether or not the assertion that data that should have been available had been materially omitted? And did you have the expertise to assess that?
We hired an independent program, but in terms of the actual entry into the city systems, no, we didn't have that. What we had was a download dump of all the emails from the city servers. And then, we were able to index and review that. What we did see was that those assertions did not identify in the emails that we received and that we downloaded and that we indexed. Further conversation in that regard, in terms of interviews and review of file folders held by that spouse, did not identify any connected relationship that would indicate that there were any such issues around that. Now, mind you too, is that our indexing also included cross emails. And so, we have confidence in that what we downloaded and indexed was consistent with what was delivered. But whether or not there was an action by the city behind the scenes in terms of the servers, we can't determine that. But what we can say is that based on, I mean, we reviewed hundreds of thousands of emails, and we utilized a system that allows pretty strong cross-referencing. And so, we're confident in that regard.
So that's why you say you can't substantiate it? You can only say you didn't find proof?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure, because that is a big, we hear over and over again from a spouse, and that gets a lot of credibility in the community. I just want to make that clear. You said that the vendor didn't have raw data?
From your first survey.
From the first survey, okay. But from the second survey...
The raw data from your first survey.
Very good. This mentioned that there were comments also from the open-ended questions, that people wrote narrative, is that correct?
There were a few, yes.
And are they available?
That is a, if they were...
Again, we didn't do the survey. So we took whatever the third-party group, the independent group provided us, and we included it in it. And I don't think comments were included in it. It was the survey report itself.
Right. But they did collect narrative comments, is that not correct?
I believe there were a couple. I can tell you on the building two survey that we did, there were some narrative comments, only about 25. And in terms of what those were, they were relatively limited in scope and balanced between...
But they are available to us to get? I only know that surveys we...
We can reach out to the vendor and see if they're, I mean, clearly, we can see if that's something of value, we'll ask the vendor to produce.
And I noticed in the survey, and I know we'll have a chance to look, there's mentioned asterisks, talking about significant differences from counterparts on some of the scoring. When you look at the chart, it has asterisks on the remarks, but there's no narrative metadata definition of what significant means. If we could learn later what constitutes significant, so we could put a context to the miracle score. There's just an explanation that's significant, but no explanation of what significant means. Two tenths of a percent, four tenths of a percent. There's no explanation. And also, whether there's any analysis behind that, should we draw any conclusions from it? I mean, that would be interesting to know. And I noticed here, there was a couple of things where organizations submitted a number of questions. For example, the Interdenominational Ministers Conference had a long list of questions. Are they answered in the report?
No. They did not relate to the scope of the work that we were doing on the review, but they were important enough because they voiced concerns of their constituents and employees that we felt that should be included for your review in consideration. Because some of the issues there relate to matters that truly are HR-related, but they, what we found is they did not have a directional impact into the scope of work around what you asked us to do, around the attacker, around your policies, around those issues that the resolution first authorized.
One last question. The Navy shooting in the Navy Yard in Washington DC was very, had a lot of characteristics similar to this event, except there were more data that explained the behavior. But the incident on government property, the incident on access to the building, the number of people that are actually victims. In your analysis of your results and your recommendations, did you go out and look at other recent things that were likewise and see the recommendations that were made in those reports? Some of those are public reports. I just, did you bring any of that to bear in making your recommendations?
Our team is a consumer of all mass shootings and incidents around workplace violence prevention. We have a significant practice in that area. So our team tries to stay abreast of what is happening. And there's pivotal work that's being done by the FBI and a few other organizations that we try to stay abreast of in that regard. So yes, we are aware of recommendations that arise in that area. And when it comes to us making recommendations to what we found in our review, we try to keep it focused on what we see firsthand and how we base that with our experience and the background of knowledge that we have in this area.
Yeah, our team member, Matt Doherty, has had significant experience and engagement with these types of events across the country. And leading on from Councilmember Tower's question is that what you see out of each of these events and the reports that come is that it frankly is a progression of learning. And by reviewing and identifying what are some of the key similarities and being able to develop your policies, your physical standards, your training to address some of those issues, that's what brings strength coming out of these types of events. And so, our report did acknowledge and consume some of those prior reports, but the recommendations that we developed here are unique and specific to the concerns and issues we saw in Virginia Beach.
Well, the reason why I mentioned that, prior to that event, they had Big Voice, they had computer pop-up notifications, which I'm sure you're familiar with.
Yeah.
And they had armed security in the building, all that. And so, I'm just trying to get insight, lessons learned, as to what really works, what really doesn't work, what works for the outsider coming in, but what doesn't work for the insider coming in. And those are two different types of security. And I'm just, I'll be interested after I read this, when you come back to ask some more questions, because I'm with Mr. Tower. I think the material, physical implementations is probably, you know, important, but probably better understanding the workforce and our policy and how we interact with employees probably pays bigger dividends from the insider threat. And the physical stuff helps you deal more with the outsider threat, I would think.
Right. And that's exactly the reason why we have limited recommendations in that area, because it is a decision for the city and how you want to work with your employee force, and also what are those investments that you need to make around security.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wood?
I appreciate the information that you have provided to us thus far. And I'm sure that I will have an opportunity and welcome the opportunity to go through the details. But what seems to be puzzling to me, just on the information I've learned so far, is the fact that we just don't have enough information on the attacker. That seems to be a very elusive part of this investigation. I'm hopeful that we can get information from his database, because to me, that's a missing key here. So I guess my, want to voice that concern. And then, the other part is, I'd like to know how we can really get access to knowing or understanding what's on his database, what's on his computer. Is the plan to just wait until the FBI releases it and then contact the police department? What would be the plan for me to get more information on the database and to learn more about this individual? Because there's just not a lot here about him.
Understood. I would engage in conversations with your chief and department heads to ensure that when the Bureau is done with their analysis, that they in fact are sharing it, and I'm sure they will, with your police department. That will be the time for you to be briefed on the insights that they're able to gather. And it's a, I understand that the Bureau, when they undertake a mission like this, it's a very exhaustive process. It will take months. I don't know how long. Maybe that's a question your chief would find out from the Bureau, but when they might have that available to you.
I also wanted to be able to say that we did develop a lot of information about this attacker. When we say that there's not information known, is that he didn't leave a manifesto. He did not say, "I'm doing it because of this." And so, it's hard sometimes to place that into context in terms of what we learn and what we know. And so, there is information, and we were able to develop information. Our hesitancy in saying why he did it is that there may be additional information on his personal databases that we did not have access to. But from what we've seen, I mean, he was, he didn't indicate with any warning behaviors or prohibitive actions in the workplace. And so, we can affirmatively state that. The question becomes, what drove him to this? And what we can... And what we can say from our retrospective review is that there are stressors here that we can identify that exist in many people's lives that don't bring them to shooting. And frankly, the person who does know this is not available for us to interview or question. And so, there is that little bit of gap in terms of confirming what information is out there, but we do believe that we've come to a fairly strong review of the information available and able to say what we say.
So is there information in what I read, will there be information in terms of his specific behavior? I know that there were some accounts that he was aggressive, from some accounts, is that in here? Is that information detailed about that aggressive behavior, or?
Yeah, and so from our review and the information that we have, the identification of aggressive, that was not something that was associated with this individual with any level of consistency. What we can say is on the day that he committed this act, he submitted a resignation early in the day, he engaged in normal work emails, he was out in the field with coworkers for three hours, and he was seen brushing his teeth, as he did every day at the same time, before he went out, got a gun, and came back and shot 12 people. And so, putting that into the context of what this person is and what this person intended to do, we know that this person shot 12 people. We also know that some of those issues, and I think if you read the report, we're pretty clear in terms of what we've been able to identify about the individual. Do we address every statement and every rumor? No. But those that had consistency or those had had some substantiation to what this offender was, we've addressed in the report, and I think that you'll see that when you have the opportunity to read it. But we are also concerned that is there information still out there that we didn't have access to? And that's our goal, and that's why we raise-
Or wasn't shared with them.
Yeah, that's our reason for raising that.
And so you mentioned that there was email information that he did not send as to, I'm not sure how you worded it, but there were things that happened to him?
In his perception about discipline-
Right.
And those, we have those emails in the report.
Does that lead to, because I know there's no specific information as to him being upset or applying for another position or being elevated to a position, but does that, that information, does it lead back to any specific behavioral or specific indication from a supervisor that he was being reprimanded? What did that lead to, or how, why was he, do you know why he was, he crafted such an email and was going to respond in that matter? Where did that come from? Are you able to point to that?
Yes, there were several occasions where he violated city policy in the, in the payment of authorizing work to be done for the city that were in conflict with city policy, and he was being reprimanded and counseled for some of that activity. And that is one case of example that we discuss in the report, so you'll see those type of details in that.
So that's what it was related to, I believe?
That is one of those situations. I think there were a couple of others.
Yeah, he's had a couple of emails that he drafted that were never sent, and so, you know, one, we can identify was related to an earlier performance improvement program, but there's a couple of others that he, whether it was a listing of his perception in terms of how he was wronged, the ability to translate to a specific incident on some of those is not capable, but we posted for review and we do an analysis of that in terms of that there was a perception there that he wasn't being treated fairly. Whether that relates to a specific incident, and there's a couple of emails around one, or if it's just in general. But this is not something that was communicated to his managers, and those performance actions that were taken are documented and contained within the report as well.
Well, once I, I'm hopeful, once I have a chance to digest this information, there will be a, an opportunity to maybe ask follow-up questions, because it's a lot of information to digest.
Yes, it is.
And I have questions now, I'm sure I'll have questions later, so I hope there will be a forum to follow up on some of the queries that I have.
Anybody else? Jess?
I just have one more question in perusing the bigger document. On one, page 123, there, I want to understand what this means, because I feel like this is probably one of those statements that could be taken out of context, but under structural challenges for the city HR department, one of the bullet points say conflicts of interest, both real and perceived, for HR liaisons who are direct reports to operational managers addressing employee performance and other matters. Can you speak in any kind of specific instances where, what conflict of interest means, and perhaps I haven't read far enough into understanding, but you do say both real and perceived, so I'm trying to understand what that means.
Right, so your HR liaisons are employees within the department who have other duties other than HR, right? So, and each vary in their level of training, but they report to the unit manager rather than to HR central. So we called it city HR versus, you know, the HR liaison. And so, being able to execute to support a manager's directive on how to discipline or engage with an employee, when I report to that same manager, and I may be of the same category as the employee who's engaged, could potentially create a conflict of interest, right?
Sure.
Do I keep my manager happy? Do I address that? But the other thing too is that even if there isn't a conflict of interest for some employees who are having problems with, within the workplace, they can perceive that as a conflict of interest, right? I keep going to this person, this person's not able to help me, and all they're doing is what the manager wants me to do. And so we heard a little bit of that as well. And so, from an area of practice, we're saying that an ums, but, and a centralized HR approach, where your HR professionals are actually outside the chain of command in terms of that unit, will help address both what's a perceived conflict and what's a potential direct conflict. Now, that being said, that was not part of what we saw here in terms of the review, but it is an outcome of the conversations and the engagement we had with people.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Anybody else, Aaron?
So, one last, can you, and I know you guys, thank you for walking us through, I know we still have a lot of questions, but overall, what, can you just break it down a couple sentences, you know, what are we learning from this incident, from this tragedy? That nothing led this shooter to do this, our city workplace environment, yes, there are things we can get better as every city, you know, things we can improve in throughout our city, as well as throughout, I'm sure every municipality can say that. I mean, what is the gist of what we learned from, or what we're going to learn from this independent review?
Thank you. You know, for Virginia Beach, for the city of Virginia Beach, you wake up most mornings prior to May 31st, you're like most cities in America, you never think this is going to happen. And here it is, it does happen in your city, and that is a rarity, but that doesn't matter that it's a rarity, it happened. And so, as you look at that, what you can learn and what you can do for it is making sure you're training, educating, preparing your workforce for the signs of behavior that can be detected. Not every case of workplace violence can be protected, but there are cases, and when we look at this situation, this is, this individual was absolutely a loner, he didn't have relationships at work that would have potentially shared insight into his struggles and what led him down to this path of violence. But our suggestions around the issues of HR and workplace violence prevention, if, in your position, I would say strongly look at those recommendations, figure out what works for your community and what your city and your budgets and how you want to govern and lead, and those are the areas to focus on to help prevent another act of violence in this community.
Anybody else? Okay, on behalf of the city, I would like to thank you for your detailed report, and we're looking forward to a follow-up action. And, you know, just to say that a good organization, a healthy organization, is always striving toward improvement, and we have a lot to absorb here. You know, since 9/11, our world has changed, since May 31st, our city has changed, and we have a lot to reflect on, and I think at this point, it's incumbent on us to do a thorough analysis, and Mr. Leahy, I think going forward, it is time to, you know, appreciate the significance of this report, take it seriously, as we should, and move forward and come up with an after-action report and recommendations, and hopefully we can do this, you know, at least have a good basis prior to our budget time, that we might be able to incorporate that in our forthcoming budget. So at this point, you know, we just want to thank you very much, and thank Mr. Ramirez and the whole team, and, you know, on behalf of a grateful city, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.